Okay, Mr. Chairman, we need your permission to order this Friday, August 24th, 2018. Time is eight thirty-two. Roll call, please.
Hi, this is Webel.
President.
Charles Smith. Katina Wulcher. Oh. And Snyder.
Sitting in for...
Yes.
Snyder is sitting in. Tammy Kuhlen Bogus.
Yeah.
Steve Summers.
President.
Jim McQuire.
President.
Richard Hilton.
Here.
Diane Marlin.
Here.
Dennis Roberts. DeFranke Finan. Patricia Avery. Patrick Graham. We do have a forum.
All right, we have a forum. Let's move on to seek approval of the agenda and the agenda.
So moved by Rick.
By Richard. Discussion. See none on paper?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Audience participation, I see none, so let's move on to minutes. Seek approval of the new notice of June twenty-second, 2018. Moved by Jim. Second.
Second.
Second by Diane, thank you. Discussion. See none on paper?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First up, consolidated financial reports. Chris, first of all, could you give an update on Betty?
Sure. I'm still in... Oh, there they go, thank you, John. Sure, good morning. Betty is doing well. She's far along in her healing process and hopes to be back first or second week in September. We've had several phone conferences with her and she's, yeah, just like her old self, so we're wishing her the best as she continues to heal and comes back to us in person.
All right, Betty?
Mm-hmm. And then the consolidated financial report, you have, as of July thirty-first, we have a healthy overall agency fund balance of ten point one million, which is, which is good, what we need to have to carry on. You'll see receivables at the bottom of that report, in particular, the ongoing receivable with ISBE for preschool. The state tends to just be slow with processing those payments. They do get here, but it takes, seems to take a while. Fund one-ten typically has receivables to offset the negative fund balance because we do that, we do all of our programs on a reimbursement basis, so that's why you'll see a small negative balance for Fund one-ten.
All right, did you, I got the list of bills too, I think, or there?
Sure, sure.
Let's just continue with that.
Listed bills are typical for this time of year. We are doing reconciling for grants that closed June thirtieth. There's a lot of rental assistance processing going on. We have new programs there, relatively new, so there's nothing really unusual in our list of bills.
All right, should we have a motion to accept, place on file, the consolidated financial reports and the list of bills? Moved by Steve Summers. Second by Rick. Discussion, see none on paper?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, let's move on to action items. First up is the, we have some FY-2018 budget amendments. Delitzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two budget amendments for the current budget, FY-2018. First one is to fund O-Seven-Five, which is our general operating fund, two grants that we've received from the Illinois Department of Transportation. The first grant is to develop a web-based planning tool for our long-range transportation plan, and the second grant is for the Kickapoo rail extension study. First grant is total of one hundred and eighty thousand and the second one is the total of one hundred and twenty-five thousand. You want to do them separately?
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Approved by Diane.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hilton. Discussion. Oh, sorry, Diane.
I just wanted to thank Rita Black and her team here at RPC for writing the grant, which was success, and their success in getting the grant from Department of Transportation for the Kickapoo rail trial extension. This is going to make a huge difference in our community, and they just pulled it together really almost at the last minute, and it was just a wonderful effort, and we're looking forward to collaborating on that.
Further discussion. We need roll call, will you?
I'm sorry? No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The last one is the Workforce Development Fund, Fund one-ten. This is a new grant, I'm sure you've heard about it in the, in the media, as well as when it was presented to the county board. This is through the US Department of Labor. It's a workforce program focusing primarily on youth between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four that have had some interactions with the justice system. It's a three-year initiative totaling one point five million dollars, but the budget amendment that we're seeking today for the current FY-2018 budget is for five hundred thousand dollars.
I can, first moved by Mr. Grier, second by Mr. Snyder. Discussion. Rick.
Part of this to do deconstruction, reconstruction types of projects.
Well, actually, so we're in the process of doing the planning for it. The way the, the grant itself is structured, they've given us, they gave us three months to do our planning process, so it will probably include all of that. We will be working with the trades as well and reaching out to various businesses, and so there'll be various activities, I'm sure, involved. The total number of individuals we'll be working with is a hundred and eighty-eight over the next three years, so it could involve deconstruction. I'm not quite sure yet because we're still in our planning process, but, good question.
Okay, we need candidate sites to work on.
Ran-Two. Thank you.
Further discussion. You see none on paper?
Aye.
Next is the bid response for partial renovation of the Head Start facilities. Delitzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think at the last meeting, we presented to you that we had received one-time funding from the Illinois State Board of Education to do various renovations of our Head Start facilities. We went through the bidding process and had retained the services of Roof Stack, Reed and Company as the architects that would help to facilitate these projects for us. We will be doing partial renovations at our Ran-Two Head Start facility. The memo outlines the type of work that will be carried out at that facility. We'll also be doing some work at our Urbana Head Start Center, as well as in Savoy. We did follow our guidelines in soliciting bids. We had it published in the News Gazette, as well as on our website. We did receive three bids to do this work, and the lowest bid that we received was from McDowell Builders totaling seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Now, just to remind the commissioners, we are on a very strict timeline in the sense that this funding that we received from the Illinois State Board of Education has to be obligated by the end of this month, which is August thirty-first, and the work has to be completed by November thirtieth. And so this will help us to not only address some of the structural issues that we have at these facilities, but, as you also know, we did have some ADA issues that we had to address as a result of the audit that was done by the Department of Justice. And so all of that work has to be completed by November thirtieth, and so we are requesting approval of the bid response from McDowell Builders. I will point out that there's a letter from the architects, they've, they've worked with these, with this company before, and if the commissioners want to review any of the bid responses, we do have them available for, for your review.
So a motion to accept the bid from McDowell Builders for this project.
So moved.
Mr. Grier. Second by Mr. Snyder. Discussion.
Just wondering, why the accelerated timeline?
Ah, so because the, the state wants the funds expended by November thirtieth, and so we have a very short window. It wasn't our choice, but really the, the funding conditions, so. Sorry.
You go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, and then I understand we want to get it accomplished. McDowell Builders, have we had experience with McDowell?
The architects did, and they actually, we have a letter from them included in the packet, speaking to their experience working with them.
Okay. That sounds good.
Okay.
And it's unfortunate the government's work this way, we want to spend our money before the fiscal year.
Yep.
Further discussion. See none on paper?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We do have, one more. We have another, we did a separate bid for roof repair at our Savoy Head Start facility, and we had to go through an accelerated process, given again the timeframe that we have to work with, with the resources that were awarded to us by the Illinois State Board of Education. The lowest bid that we received for the roof repair is from, I'm going to butcher this name, Filotto?
Filotto?
Filotto Roofing, for totaling seventy-five thousand, eight hundred dollars.
There's a motion to approve the bid from Filotto, moved by Mr. Hilton, second by Mr. Snyder. Discussion. Is this a complete re-roofing, or?
Project manager, Mr. Dimmitt.
It is, is not for complete tear-off. It's, it's complete tear-off, but they don't know what the underlayment will be, so there's a contingency in there for any plywood replacement that they get to. The complication with this is that it's a commercial bid, it's a, it's a commercial roof project, but it's a residential-style roof, and so, shingle, and so there are very few folks that are used to doing Davis Bacon-type work with this type of roofing, so that aggravated the, aggravated the situation.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, see none on paper?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And next is the Head Start ADA supplemental funding request. Ms. Guns, Guns.
Good morning. And this is a follow-up to Delitzo's presentation of the bids. This is in, in order to fully address the outstanding ADA compliance and health and safety concerns at the facilities, we are asking Regional Office, actually the Office of Head Start, for additional supplemental funding to support the renovations at the centers. Some of those, some of those renovations will include resurfacing of the parking lot, sidewalks, also the window replacements at some of the facilities, and, and also part of the roofing replacement. We are asking for approval of the supplemental funding at one hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-six is for the non-federal share match. Again, this is to fulfill the ADA compliances and also the safety concerns that we have at the facilities.
Motion to approve that request. Moved by Mr. Grier. Second by Mr. Summers. Brandy, this is just simply a request.
This is a request for funding, for additional supplemental funding.
The other question I have is, window replacements, are they all windows or just select windows?
We have, we have window replacement at Urbana, and we're replacing all of those windows. At Ran-Two, we are replacing twenty-eight, twenty-eight windows.
Does this have a similar timing as the previous that we were talking about, or?
Well, with the, the feds, if we can get this out as soon as possible, typically the turnaround is about thirty days.
As far as construction goes, Dick, it, this is matching money to go with the, with the State Board of Education money, so yes, it's, it's, and, and the expenditure of these funds would be within the, the projects that have already been bid and that you, you just approved.
So this is, you might have already said approval of the debt, or we're applying for it?
Applying for it.
Applying for the, we're applying for supplemental.
Okay.
Rick.
Yes, this is related to the ADA compliances, so, such as the parking lots and the sidewalks. Yeah.
Question? See none on paper?
Aye.
Opposed. Next up is the FY-19 RPC budget proposal. Delitzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am happy to present to the commission today the FY-2019 budget for the Regional Planning Commission, and I'll be seeking preliminary approval of this budget today, and then we'll be coming back in November for the full approval, once we have worked out all of our compensation and salary information. So just to give you just a highlight of our budget, I'll start off with overall. We're projecting our revenues to be at twenty-seven million dollars, four hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six. This is an increase in revenue by about five point four percent. We're looking at expenditures of about twenty-seven million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty-four. This budget accommodates the five funds that the RPC has. It includes a hundred grants and eight program areas. As you know, our federal, we rely primarily on our federal and state funding, so this makes up about eighty-seven percent of our budget. We are also projecting staffing levels to increase in all of our divisions. However, even though we have experienced some interesting growth in the last few months, and I would say that in our operating fund, we have brought in new funding, probably over three million dollars in, in new funding, but I will say that we're still, as a grant-funded organization, operate in an environment that is uncertain. So, you know, we keep monitoring, you know, things that are happening at the state, as well as the federal level, but at this point in time, I think we can see that we have increased some of our revenue, which will result in not only more work, but increasing some of our staffing levels. One other thing I want to point out is we are expecting our full-time equivalency to go up to two hundred and seventy-seven. This does include some of our youth workers that we employ through our workforce development program. One thing I want to also point out, this thing is not working. I may have to stand. Says it's fully charged. Yes, please, thank you. All the way back. The other thing I want to highlight is that, as you can see in the pie chart, fifty percent of our revenue goes towards personnel, and about forty-four percent goes towards services that are provided to, through our various programs. Let's go to the next slide. Now, to highlight some of our various funds, this is our general operating fund, Fund O-Seven-Five. The revenue that we are projecting for that fund is fourteen million dollars, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and five. This will help to support seventy-three full-time equivalency, and with an expenditure projected at fourteen million dollars, one hundred, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and forty. We are projecting sustained growth in FY-2019. We're also anticipating receipt of additional six hundred thousand dollars for new transportation and planning initiatives. This will also again result in staffing levels increasing. One thing to highlight with, with RPC's budget is that our administrative costs are less than seven point five percent for the entire agency, which is lower than what the state allows. The state allows, I think, up to twenty percent in admin, and the feds allow up to fifteen percent, and so we're very proud of the fact that with our agency, we are below both federal and state thresholds as far as administrative costs are concerned. Next slide. For our Fund one-oh-four, early childhood, we are projecting nine million dollars, fifty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is an increase in revenue by about three percent, so I'll say it's a modest increase, bringing on our FTEs to one hundred and thirty-six, with expenditures of nine million dollars, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. This again, our early childhood fund is a blend of both federal and state funding, so we get funding from the Illinois State Board of Education, as well as from the Federal Office of Head Start. The full-day services will allow us to serve about five hundred, five hundred and seventy-six families. These funds will include support for additional staffing support in our classrooms, so again, it's a modest growth for our Head Start and early Head Start program for FY-2019. Fund one-ten, which is our workforce development fund, revenues projected at three point eight million dollars. This is a twenty-four percent increase. Again, I'll explain the increase. We are projecting F, sixty-nine FTEs in FY-2019, with expenditures of three million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. This does include the new grant, the budget amendment that we approved for FY-2018, so this does include this new funding from the US Department of Labor totaling one point five million dollars, and it will be over the next three years, or thirty-nine months. And so it includes staffing for that. I believe for that particular grant, we budgeted for four point five, or I was just saying, five new staff that would be hired to work under that new initiative. Again, this is in response to, there's a real focus on not only working with the re-entry population, but particularly with this, with this administration, there's a focus of wanting to engage more with the trades and do apprenticeships as part of the workforce development initiative, and so we're very happy that this will be part of our initiative. And now, the other thing to point out, though, is even though our workforce funding covers the four-county area, this new grant will only be in Champaign County. The next fund is the Fund four-seventy-five, which is our economic development program. We're expecting revenues of one hundred and fourteen thousand and expenditures of two hundred and sixty-one thousand. This does accommodate restricted revolving loan portfolio with proportionate job creation. We're hoping to improve economic, as, as economic conditions improve, we're hoping that there'll be more demand for our loan programs. Fund four-seventy-four, which is our USDA loan fund, again, with that one, projecting revenues of twenty-ten thousand and expenditures of fifty-five thousand dollars. This is our intermediary revolving loan program, IRP, and we provide low-interest loans, particularly in rural areas, with populations of less than twenty-five thousand individuals. And that, I would be asking for preliminary approval. Thank you.
Motion to accept the authority budget.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hilton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Snyder. Discussion, questions?
Question. On the revolving loan fund, I noticed that we have budgeted one hundred and seventy-five thousand in bad debt. What constitutes bad debt, and why do we have it?
We, we try to plan for a possibility of some debts that, or some loans that, that might fail, but typically what that is made up of is the deferred loans that we've done for home rehabs that get written off after the length of the loan is, has expired. It's about fifteen years. So there's probably more budgeted there than we will use, but we try to be generous in that.
Thank you.
Jim.
I think I've been involved in some of this.
Turn it off your microphone.
I turned it off.
Yeah. Turn it green light. There you go. That's the ones. Patient, there you go.
Thank you. I've been involved in a few of these discussions with these loans, in trying to generate the loans. Is it that mostly Champaign or Bana, that, that, you know, the economy's much better? Is it the smaller towns that don't? Maybe, are we pushing out into Ran-Two and Savoy and St. Joe, maybe? I, I, you know, I don't know. I remember some of that discussion that I don't.
I know in past experience with loans I've signed off, and certainly there are some in Ran-Two, I know. I don't recall any recently, but in the past, it's really been all over the counties, mostly Champaign, Bana, and Ran-Two, but other places too, I think.
Have our own revolving loan fund. I think it's about, the total capital there is about one point five million, so it's fairly sizable. We're working, we, last year, there were issues, of course, with the lack of activity there, and RPC helped the village get that program restored, because it was in jeopardy of being lost, when the feds didn't like how we were doing things. So there was a new plan put in place, a five-year plan, and this year, we're following up on our compliance and reporting, so. I'm also working on getting somebody in to help us with our outreach efforts. I don't think we've been very effective in working with the, the business community and trying to get some of those loans out, so we have a couple of people that are looking for loans now, and we have this person coming in, hopefully by beginning of September, to help work on that and work on those other compliance issues I mentioned.
Further questions? Discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, it's got to Head Start, early Head Start management report. Brandy.
Okay, so, in your packet is the June management report. The July management, management report will actually be in the next, on the next agenda, but I wanted to give you an update as to where we are with Head Start. The school year is fast approaching. We start September fourth. We're very excited to have some of these renovations done at our sites. It'll be a nice makeover for the classrooms and also for the facilities. We did accomplish a new, putting in a new playground in Ran-Two, so if you haven't seen it yet, we will be having an open house here pretty soon, and it's really awesome. It's a really nice playground for the kids, and they're really enjoying it. We also did a, a minor update to the playground in Savoy, and we're excited to have the kids start back and also check out that particular playground as well. Employees right now are starting back, and they are participating in a lot of training. Yesterday, we had Karen Sims present information on trauma-informed care, and it was spectacular. It was a great training for the staff, and it was, it was good for them to, to have some of that information and apply it to their, to their classrooms, starting in September. Also, yesterday, it was announced that we received full funding for the FY-19 ISBE grant from, for the preschool for all and expansion, so we, that actually just got into our, into our, our database just yesterday, so we're excited to get that updated and move on with the school year. So for this particular management report for June, I'm, I'm recommending that you accept and place on file.
So the motion to do that. Moved by Mr. Grier, second by Mr. Hilton. Discussion, questions?
So, just want to understand the budget that we just saw. There was some increases last, this year, we're in, I don't know if that happened, so that changes.
There you go. Well, you'd be, you'd be patient, there you go, patient.
Being patient's a problem. So... Being patient, that's a problem. So, how much of an increase did we have over this year in?
Yes, ISBE actually increased their preschool for all grants, our preschool for all grant to about $35,000.
Was, was it almost a million and a half that?
That was for the reentry.
Oh, no, no.
Not that one.
I was talking about Head Start.
There's cola money coming here pretty soon. We have not received approval at this time. We're hoping that that will come, we will be notified in the next week or two.
See none, all in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Put that on the file. Okay, next up, program division updates. Chris, do you have anything for us?
Sure, just a couple things. We had DCO here in mid-July for workforce development monitoring visit, and that went very well. Preliminary reports, no findings for us. We just completed a, a federal housing and urban development monitoring visit. That was the first time they had been here, I think, to, to monitor our rental programs, and no findings there either, I'm happy to report. We are, of course, working on closing out the grants in June 30th. Staff is busy preparing, getting this budget ready for everybody, and getting ready to fiscally, I think, for this new reentry grant, as, as we learn about what the requirements are there in more detail.
Chris, Becky's not here, but you can see the report that's in the package. Lisa, what do you have for us today?
Just a quick update. I think a number of the things in my division have been covered throughout the other reports. We are working on the planning phase with the new youth reentry grant. We also have a number of initiatives that are happening across the community with regard to workforce, have a special initiative that we talked about, that we've been working with the City of Champaign, with the fire department, that's been going well. The Youth Assessment Center, we had the event, so thank, thank you for all that attended. That was a successful event. We've been doing a number of trainings of the staff at the Youth Assessment Center to expand the services and the expertise that they offer. We're about to do a sort of justice conferencing training. They just completed moral recognition therapy training, and we're also extending our partnerships into the schools, and then also with community providers, particularly a new, a partnership that's existed, but it's been formalized through an MOU with the Youth and Family Alliance. We also have a lot going on in the world of our homelessness and housing services. Chris talked about our recent monitoring. We've been doing a lot of work with strategic groups throughout the community with our continuum of care, and exploring opportunities for expansion of services that we're currently doing. So, that's a report, and I can take any questions that you have regarding anything that's going on in community services.
So, we guess we'll move, let's have a motion to accept and file, accept and file all these program division updates. Move by Rick. Second by Jim. Discussion, see none, all in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Next up is Gilletso's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'll be brief, I hope. A few weeks ago, we had a visit with Congressman Rodney Davis. This was a visit that was facilitated by the National Community Action Foundation, which is the organization that primarily works on life issues, weatherization, and community services block grant with members of Congress. And so I think it was a very successful visit. He visited three agencies in his district, the agency in Bloomington, an agency in Springfield, and then our, our organization. I know some of the county board members were in attendance. We toured our workforce, Illinois Work Net Center on Mattis, as well as the Youth Assessment Center. It was probably serendipitous on our part to focus on workforce, because the following week, there was a roundtable meeting that was held in Godfrey, Illinois, with the Special Assistant to the President, with a focus on workforce development. I did go to that event, and I was glad, because I learned that there were four key bills that Congressman Davis is working on in Congress on a bipartisan basis. The first one actually was signed into law, which was called the Strengthening, Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act. This was recently signed into law by the President. It provides funding and flexibility for states to offer programs promoting career and technical education. What I understood about this is that, you know, for generations, I think the focus has been to drive people to go to college, when there are other, you know, technical skills that you can develop without having to actually go to a four-year institution. So this would help to fund some of those efforts. The second bill that he is working on is actually a workforce development bill that's going to be within the farm bill. In the House version, there's funding for workforce training, particularly to ensure that there is employment and training for those individuals that are receiving food stamps. And my understanding is that Congressman Davis has been appointed to serve on the conference committee tasked with resolving the differences between the House and the Senate version of this bill. The third one is another bill that would help individuals that are receiving temporary assistance for needy families, also known as TANF. This would help individuals that are receiving TANF to get employment. The bill would, would help to accelerate individuals into the workforce, and it encourages employers to hire those receiving TANF benefits by allowing states to subsidize up to 50 percent of their wages. This bill did pass the House at 377 votes to 31, and it's now awaiting Senate action. The third one is a bill that was introduced by Congressman Davis, and it's called the LEAP Act, which would incentivize more businesses to have apprenticeship programs by offering federal tax credits for hiring individuals that are participating in an apprenticeship program registered through the U.S. Department of Labor, or any of the state agencies, such as the Illinois Department of Labor. So, those are some of the bills that are, that are going on right now. There's, as you know, there is a strong emphasis on workforce, even though the economy is doing well, and I know that Champaign is the fastest-growing city outside of, out of, out of Chicago. But the, the, the challenge is that, even though we know that there are more jobs than there are individuals to fill those positions, the, the challenge is not, we, we don't know where all those jobs are located. And so, some of these efforts, I think, not only through these bills, but the efforts by the administration, would help to provide resources, so we do know, like, where these jobs are located, and if we, if we have a pool of employees that are, can match the skills that are needed for those jobs, that that can happen. And so we will continue to track, as these bills move through the process in Congress, and hopefully will be beneficial to the clients that we serve through, through our program here in, in, in our four-county area. The other thing is, we are also, we've been approached by Senator Durbin's office to visit our, our agency, and so, as we get to a point of finalizing a date, we will let the commissioners know when that will take place. And so I think it's great that we have opportunity to provide some visibility to our organization, given that we do get both federal and state funding. We want to make sure that our elected officials have a, an understanding of how we're impacting our community. With that said, that concludes my report.
Questions for Gilletso? Jim?
So, obviously, all four of those bills, and the job training that we, that RPC provides, is important to bring all the people that we have in our community up. And I think Senator Durbin or Senator Duckworth's office, when you're bringing, would be important, and you know that, that's why. Because businesses need those employees, and we need to move our people forward. Right, so I think it's a great opportunity. And, and for the community, I mean, everybody, I appreciate that report, that's very positive.
I'll just add one thing. So, as you heard from the budget presentation, you know, we have been sort of experiencing some rapid growth, and one of the things that we have been doing, I think I may have reported on this at the last meeting, is really doing a comprehensive space study. And that's why we have Mr. Dimmitt here. He's helping us with that, looking at not only our existing space, but based on existing growth and projected growth, you know, how, whether this is, this is the space, if that would accommodate our growth, or other things that we need to consider as an, as a, as an organization. The other thing to also make you aware of is, related to space, we, we talked about some of the, the three Head Start facilities that we're renovating. There is one, which is a partnership that we have with the Champaign School District, located on Neal Street. We entered into a 20-year lease agreement with the school district. I think we were able to provide some resources to renovate an old bakery, I think. And so that lease will be coming up to, will be expiring, I think, in 2021, 2022, 2023. And the school district will be taking that space, as they've also expanded their early childhood program. And so, we are, right now, actively thinking and looking at potential space for our Head Start program, and one of our desires is to actually be located in the area of Champaign where our families are coming from. And so, we are putting filters out there, and hoping that we will have identified a new location for at least our Champaign Head Start location before that lease comes to expiration in 2023.
I have a question for you, Brandy or Lisa. There's a recent report out that states that preschool children in the state of Illinois are like only 25 percent ready, or 25 percent are prepared. Are you familiar with that report? If you are, just, can you know some of the details, like what areas they really lacking in, and things like that?
Well, there are several reports floating out there, but I would have to specifically see the one that you, you've read. But for our particular program, between 90 and 95 percent on average are ready to go to school by September. That I would, you know, that includes their social-emotional development, their academic skills in math and science. Literacy is, is typically pretty high for us as a program. So again, I want to make sure that, you all know, as, on this board, we, we look at those children's progress throughout the year, and we also determine where we need to improve in the following year or the upcoming school year. But typically, it's, you know, falls in the range of social, you know, social-emotional development. That's where it's the lowest, but we do see progress. Again, I would have to look at other, other people's, you know, other, you know, the, the information that you received in order to really give you.
It was something I saw on the internet, but it circulated widely, like, earlier this week, I think it was a state of Illinois study, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't, not locally based, and it covered the whole state of Illinois, and I'm, I'm not sure what their sample size was, or anything like that.
And really, and honestly, you know, within this community, I believe most of our kids are, especially in the early childhood programs, are, are ready to go to school.
Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.